This is the zoning board of appeals meeting, December 20th, 2018. On the agenda tonight, we have a call to order miscellaneous is approved the October 18th minutes and vote to accept the withdrawal of a previous case. Two public hearings, appealing the inspector, appealing the inspector of buildings decision. And then we have a minor modification for a building plan that we need to address. And we have a continued public hearing with Marion Way. And then we have a discussion with the ZBA meetings. And then adjournment. So I have a call, meeting to order at this point. And ask that the members have all had a chance to read the previous minutes of October 18th. With the motion, we accept minutes of October 18th. Motion's been made to accept the minutes of October 18th. We'll hear it seconded.
I'll second it.
Tom can second the motion. All those favors, if I may say, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the members have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, this is the withdrawal that needs to be voted on.
This was case number 1903. We had 526 Weatherfield Street. Nancy Miller wanted to confirm that she wanted to separate the lot that she had or whatever it was. And we decided that she, that was already a grandfather's lot. Remember that? You remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. So she's asking to withdraw her application. So I would ask for a motion to accept the withdrawal.
Will be. Second.
Both of you made second. Your own favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have a public hearing, appealing the inspektor buildings decision at 33 Ellsworth Road. Open's public hearing, case number 1904, an application received by the Rowley IDL Properties LLC. Care of me, the attorney, appealing the inspector of buildings decision is now open. The public hearing will proceed in orderly fashion. I ask for cooperation, the following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard after the application's presented and the board members have asked questions. This hearing is made video and audio taped. Therefore, when you address the board, please state your name and address. Speak slowly and audibly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. The purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider the pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve with conditions or deny. Before hearing from the public, the applicant will be allowed to present their case and then the board members shall ask questions or comment. Does any member of the board have any conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No.
Okay. Public notice for this application is posted in the town hall, sent to a certified list of parties with interest, and published in the town hall on December 5th, 2018, and December 12th, 2018, and reads as follows. A public hearing will be held at the town hall annex 39 Central Street on Thursday, December 20th at 7:05 PM to act on an application received November 14th, 2018, from RDL Properties LLC, Care of Mead, Tollesman, and Costa, the applicants. Is appealing the inspector buildings decision. The property is located at 33 Ellsworth Road in the outline district and is shown on the census map six, lot 29. At the public hearing, members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that support either the approval or denial of this petition. Lisa, this is all we have for an application. Bear with me, folks. This is fourth page up. Okay. Okay. Advocate, IDL Properties LLC, Care of Mead, Hallam, and Costa, 30 Green Street, New Application is hereby made as a party agreed to review the decision made by the inspector of buildings. And it is, indeed is recorded in Essexburg, the Deed South District, in book number 35867 and page 433. As a previous variant or a special permission of the zoning deed that was being requested, no. And a prescription of proposed work for use is construction of one single family home.
Mr. Chairman, at some point, and I don't know if it's relevant right now or it's most important right now, but at some point I have a procedural question. So when you're done with, you know, reading the town committee comments, the board comments, whatever, I have a procedural question about taking factual evidence in this matter.
Is the attorney here for?
Yes, sir. Jay Tallerman of Mead, Tallerman and Costa.
Okay. I only have one letter that I need to read. I have a letter here from the board of selectmen. In guiding this matter. Zoning Board of Appeals application from RDL Properties, appealing the building inspector's decision on a building permit at 23. Okay, that's the other case, 33 Ellsworth Road. As shown on the census map. You got the other one, Lisa?
The other one.
This is, this is the other case.
That's the both.
The both?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I see it. Zoning Board of Appeals application from RDL Properties, appealing the building inspector's decision on a building permit at 23 Ellsworth Road, as shown in the census map six, lot 31. And zoning board of appeals application from IDL Properties, appealing the building inspector's decision on a building permit at 33 Ellsworth Road, as shown in the census map six, lot 29. On December 3rd, 2018, the board of selectmen reviewed two applications we've referenced above. Due to litigation involving Ellsworth Meeting House Road that is currently being appealed, the selectmen require you to work with town council, Tom Mullin, on any matter related to these properties. Tom Mullin should be present at any hearing regarding these applications. And Mr. Mullin, you are here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll let you speak.
Sure. From here, up there, wherever you like.
Wherever you want. Wherever you want. You just stand right there.
Hold on a minute. A little bit, so I'm not talking over people. So my name is Jay Tallerman, Mead Tallerman Costa. I represent RDL. Roger LeBlanc, principal of RDL is with me. This is two appeals. I don't know if you want to call procedurally the other one and...
One of the questions I was going to ask you is, do you mind if we run these together?
I absolutely think it's appropriate in the interest of your time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't move.
Okay. So this obviously involves an issue that you're not unfamiliar with in that it follows on a piece of litigation that considered house lots on the same way on Ellsworth Road. We have two lots. There's, if you recall, Ellsworth Road has a chain down the middle. One side can access from Wilson Pond and the other side from Leslie. And they, both lots are owned by Mr. LeBlanc, are similarly situated, similarly sized. There is a little bit of a difference between the two. We raise a number of points in our appeals and most of them follow the same basic themes, but I do want to get to the difference between the two lots because I think it's important to note. We suggest that the lots are entitled to building permits under a number of different theories and think that the court's decision can be distinguished. We present facts that weren't in evidence during the court's proceeding as to the nature of the roadway vis a vis its status as a public way or not a public way that the court never had an opportunity to, based upon our review of their record, to consider, including certain actions by the town, by the town's electric company, so to speak, in placing poles and in all other respects treating it as public. Now, I'm glad that your town council is here. We know that that's a weighty legal matter that might require further consideration and discussion. I don't expect that the board sitting here today is going to make a sweeping legal proclamation as to the status of the roadway, but I think that's an ongoing issue. Where I think that I would like to emphasize some of the difference in facts that we have is with respect to the adequacy of Ellsworth to service these two lots. In particular, Lot 33 stands in pretty stark contrast to the set of facts that were present in the court case. Lot 33, and we provided photos as to the adequacy of the way and showing the way. A short time ago, my client received approval for a lot with frontage on a way that had less good qualities than Ellsworth, was more rutted, not even as wide. And we think that just on its face, especially with respect to Lot 33, which accesses from the Wilson Pond side, that there's adequate access. And we think that the documentary and photographic evidence demonstrate that on its face. We think it's important that when you review whether or not that lot in particular has adequate access, that you really shouldn't follow what the evidence was in the court case itself because they considered a very different set of facts. The witnesses in that case didn't consider access from the Wilson Pond side. It's right in the case. I think it's the next to last page of the case. They only considered the adequacy of access from the Leslie roadside. We believe the access is far superior from the Wilson Pond side. And I think the photos show that. We have showed photos in the package from both directions. And we think it's easy to demonstrate that, at least with respect to that lot, Lot 33, that there's superior access there. The placement of the bollards, the bollard and the chain itself has kind of prevented or has operated to degrade the level of access because there hasn't been an ability to improve the connection between the two sides. We have suggested to the town that if it, in fact, it isn't a public way, that that chain and those bollards are going to have to come down, in which case the access can be maintained straight through in a way that's more convenient for emergency personnel and others. My client's also committed to maintaining the way, to improving it as need be. He's willing to provide sprinklers to the extent that the fire department is concerned about access or the slowness of access as they may determine it because of the lack of a public water line with respect to either of the houses, but especially with respect to 33. We've been speaking with town council as well on a number of subjects, including potential proposals for considering Lot 33 just on its own right now and forestalling consideration of Lot 23, which is beyond the chain coming from the Wilson Pond side or coming from the Leslie roadside on the other side. And we're willing to consider that as well in terms of our discussion with the board. It's clear to us, based upon looking at this, that sooner or later, because we're 40 feet of right-of-way in that area based upon the plans of record, the roadway as it stands is much less than that. My client can improve, has the rights to improve this way all the way through at substantially greater width. We can, by sooner or later, develop this roadway in a way that makes sense for emergency access or makes more sense. We think it's satisfactory now, especially just for one house. There is, after all, a house right across the street from us that enjoys access on a daily basis across from Lot 33 without any kind of negative occasions that we're aware of. And we're satisfied to let sleeping dogs lie in terms of improvements to that roadway to the extent the town is concerned or the zoning board or the building department or the fire department is concerned about the pace of development in that area. We think we can manage that effectively by doing just this one lot now without substantial improvements. If, in fact, we're not entitled to a building permit and this board decides to uphold the building commission, we probably will pursue an improvement of the way so that we can satisfy the fire department and the building department. That will result in opening up the roadway more and will probably increase the rate of development down there, not just on our lots, but on the other, with respect to the other undeveloped lots there. We take no position as to whether those lots are developable or not developable, but we're cognizant that in that area of town, that development all at once provides some stress in terms of concerns over opening up that area. We're willing to work with the town on pacing that out by working with one lot at a time. Again, we floated some of those concepts with your town council and those are in process. Other than that, we rely on our submissions. I'm happy to answer any questions on either the public way information or the adequacy of access, but we feel quite comfortable that with respect to Lot 33 and with some minor improvements in the removal perhaps of the chain, Lot 23 as well, that it provides adequate access based upon the fact that there's already, it's already providing access to Leslie Road or to Leslie Extension, I believe, as well as a lot right across the street from us and that there's other lots in town that have been approved along the same, with the same level of frontage. It's fairly straightforward with respect to all the other information here. I don't want to waste your time. I'd rather respond to your questions on any concerns that you have on what we have going forward. So with that, I'll take questions or comments or respond in any way you see fit.
Mr. Chairman, I think this would be the appropriate time for me to ask my question procedurally.
All right.
We have a land court case that has decided that the relevant section of Meeting House Road is not a public way. And I understand now, which I didn't know before, that that's on appeal, which is fine because it means that if it's on appeal, then it's not appropriate to say that we have to go by that case. Because were it not on appeal, we probably would have to be saying, well, you know, if it wasn't appealed, we have to live with it. Nevertheless, it is on appeal. I think these applications are premature to the court's decision in the appeal. The court, the land court, has decided it's not a public way. For us to take evidence, which means whether or not we decide there's a matter of fact, I don't think is appropriate because it appears to be a matter of law right now. Now, it's not decided law because it's on appeal. But if that decision's on appeal, we don't know where that's going. And we're going to take evidence and take people's time to come here and testify about this or that on an issue that could be moved. When the court decides its appeal, it'll be appropriate for the applicant to proceed one way or the other. But as far as I can tell, this is not a matter of fact, which this board has to do. It's a matter of law and it's, we're not a, we're not a court of interlocutory appeal to decide in the middle of a case, you know, to proceed or not. And I don't, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for us to proceed, to take the town's resources, to take evidence on something where the courts are still in the middle of deciding.
If I could respond briefly to that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate any reticence of perhaps going in a way that the land court did not decide. However, the land court decision is based expressly by the judge's own hand on the evidence that that judge received. We are not trying to second guess this judge. What we do in our memo and with the information that we provide is provide additional evidence that may have tipped the scales. But secondarily, and I think more importantly for your purposes here tonight, we provide an alternative to provide relief. Because there are three ways that a roadway can provide sufficient frontage. The first is if it's a public way. The second is if it's a way created under the subdivision control law. And the third is if it's a pre-existing way that has, in the opinion of the town, adequate access grades, width, and such. The land court considered all three of those and they found against the property owners on all three. What we have suggested, at least with respect to Lot 33 for now, is that there are factually different circumstances on the last form of a roadway that provides adequate access. And that is that coming from Wilson Pond as opposed to Leslie Road, which was the only way they considered it in the land court proceeding, we think there is adequate access, at least with respect to Lot 33 now. And we think with the removal of the chain coming from the Wilson Pond side, that it will, can be made to have adequate access easily. And we're emphasizing Lot 33 today, but it is a factually different circumstance with respect to Lot 33 and coming from the other side of Ellsworth that this board absolutely has jurisdiction to consider today. Regardless of what happens after, and we have obviously rights of, you know, to challenge or do anything on the public way side of things, sooner or later, if we're unsuccessful before you or in an appeal or otherwise, we're going to improve this way. Mr. LeBlanc has an investment in these two lots and has had it for a while. He has the rights to improve it. We think it's adequate right now with respect to one of the lots right now, as is today. It's remarkably similar to one of his other lots, which we provide information on that was approved on Walnut Drive. We provide the photos. We also invite this board to take a view of Walnut, where he has a house now, and the roadway in front of Lot 33, which already services a house adequately. And we think it's satisfactory on those grounds and is factually dissimilar and not bound in any way by the land court decision. Now, I don't want to get overly argumentative about these things. We're happy to work with you. We're happy to agree to pacing our development out and improving or not improving. We think inevitably there's going to be some development along this road because there are several parties with the rights to improve it. We're happy to work with you, with Mr., with the selectmen, with your town council to develop this in the right way at a pace that is workable for the town.
Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I...
In regards to Bob's comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I too, like Attorney Tallerman, was going to preface my answer to Mr. Kuhl's question by focusing the board on the three issues that are before you. The applicant would be entitled to a building permit if the answer to any of three questions were yes. One question is, is the way a public way? Another question is, is the way a way that has been approved and endorsed under subdivision control? And the third question is, is it a way that existed actually on the ground when subdivision control was adopted in Rowley in 1952 and currently has sufficient grades, construction, et cetera, so that in your view, it suffices for adequate access? And it is really the latter point that the applicant is focusing on, as I understand Mr. Tallerman's presentation tonight. To Mr. Kuhl's question, he is correct, of course, that the land court has determined that Meeting House Road and this portion of Ellsworth Road, so-called, is not a public way. However, your board should always be willing to hear out any applicant and should not foreclose an applicant from making a presentation. foreclose an applicant from making a presentation. I don't understand, Mr. Taylorman, to be saying that he wants to waste a lot of your time on the public way argument. It sounds like he's made a written presentation, he'll entertain questions if you have them, but he's focusing rather on the third question. To the extent that it matters, my opinion that I'm giving you now is, this road is not a public way. And the selectmen were anxious for me to attend this meeting because the town has invested a great deal of time and money in the legal victory that we got in the land court on that question. With respect to, however, you must, I advise you, hear out the applicant if the applicant has additional evidence that they wish to present on that and other questions. On the second question, whether it's a subdivision way, again, I understand, Mr. Taylorman, to be not focusing on that so much, though of course, it is addressed in his presentation. My own advice would be that I do not believe that I have ever seen a subdivision plan that shows this way as accepted as a subdivision way. It appears on some A and R plans, but an A and R plan is endorsed, approval not required. And under the statute, the question here is, is this a way approved and endorsed as, under the subdivision control law? To my knowledge, there has been no such approval. And the final question is the one that the applicant focuses your attention on, and it is a very appropriate one for you to entertain factual discussion about. Is this a way that was in existence on the ground in 1952? And assuming that it is, does it currently have grades and construction that would satisfy you? And I can tell you that in litigation on that kind of question, very frequently, what courts look for is, is the road something that the fire department is okay with? So that kind of inquiry, I think, would be where you, where you probably want to focus your efforts. And I understand Attorney Taylorman to be trying to focus your effort, your attention in that direction.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a follow-up questions at the town council? To Bob's point, even if the board identifies evidence that Mr. Taylorman provides that would allow us to conclude that the road could either be made to have adequate access at some point in time, if it doesn't now, actually, but it could be made to in our judgment, is it within the jurisdiction of the board to look at the existing case that's under appeal and say, we don't really care what the status of that is, we're prepared to move forward on this one subject and grant a permit? Or to overturn the building inspector's decision because in our judgment, regardless of that appealed state, it's an adequate condition?
Well, again, I think your board wants to take all evidence that's presented. You don't want to be in a position of refusing to entertain evidence or argument. The land court decision is one piece of evidence, a powerful piece, I would advise. However, the applicant makes other arguments and you should hear them out.
And if I may, that's precisely what we're suggesting, is that each lot should be considered on its own merits. I'm willing to concede certain similarities with respect to Lot 23, which is kind of on the other side of the chains, coming up from Wilson Pond, because looking at what the land court said, they talked about adequacy of access coming from Leslie. And presently, given the location of that barrier that's there, that would be the point of access. With respect to Lot 33, it's a factually different situation. On page, I forget which, the second to last page, I believe, of the land court decision. Let me see here. Yeah, so it's actually the last page. Additionally, defendants argue town emergency vehicles cannot safely access plaintiff's lots from Leslie Road using the disputed way. That's not what we're suggesting as it applies to Lot 33. Lot 23, yes, as it stands right now, until the barrier is removed, that's, it would have to come from Leslie. Here, the, and I agree with, with your town council, I'm a town council in a lot of towns, and I always go straight to the fire chief, too. The factual question that you would have to be satisfied with to treat this lot, Lot 33, differently than perhaps the other lots beyond the fence are treated, would be, is the fire department or could they be satisfied by access from the Wilson Pond side? That question was not addressed, based on our review of the evidence in the other case. And so we think it should stand on its own merits. It already accesses coming from that area of the Leslie Extension, as well as the lot right across the street from us. So, but again, we think it's, it's, there's an opportunity to consider these facts anew. And we'd also suggest, and we'd be willing to accept a condition, or to the extent that the fire department thinks it's satisfactory, that we'd be willing to sprinkler that house up to the fire department's standards with all the necessary monitoring equipment and otherwise, to the extent you had any concern about the lack of a public water supply or and ease of fighting structural fire in that, in that area, which is obviously a little more remote than some neighborhoods in town. So we're willing to work on that and we think it's adequate right now, based upon other approvals on similarly situated and similarly constructed roadways. But yes, we absolutely think that it's worthy of consideration on its own merits. We think there, certainly with respect to Lot 33.
Tom, as a resident, I live at the far end of our Meeting House Hill, actually, comes out on Newberry Road, so I'm very familiar with the walk. I've walked it for the last 25 years as a resident when my kids were little. And in the, in the application, you point out, should the board conclude for whatever set of circumstances, that we were unable to overturn the building inspector's position on it, that at face value, that the fence, which is a really cable gate more than anything else, be removed because there's a question of what the town is doing if in fact, the town put that up, blocking access on a private way? Now, Tom, in the litigation perhaps, that seems to me, as you say, at Lot 23, it's not, it's not a barrier to access to Lot 23, because Lot 23 can be accessed more easily off of Ellsworth, direct off of Wilson Pond. And I can see that. But certainly, I would think the fire department would be interested in access in either or both ways, particularly to a spot that's pretty remote in and of itself, just geographically speaking.
Certainly makes sense.
Is there anything, do we have anything more about really how that cable is there, when it was put there, who's responsible for it there? Because it would seem to me that that would be one element of thinking about accepting any element of access.
Oh, I see that. So we do have the information on when the gate, we were able to find the history of that. I'll show it to Tom first. It's, I think, going back to 2000. The highway department put it up there.
The highway department.
It doesn't quite say why, but that's, that's when, that's when it was placed there. I'm happy to provide this to you, too.
Do we have that or no?
That wasn't in our main application package. We've obtained it since then.
Okay. Yeah, I can just read it for everyone's benefit. It says, "To all departments, boards and committees, Ray Meeting House Lane, the highway department will be closing a section of Meeting House Lane on April 26, 2000, as indicated on the map provided. All departments concerned shall receive a key for their emergency access. If your department has any questions, please contact Scott Levitt, Highway Supervisor."
I'll show it to you. And it shows kind of darkened off the side that it wants to close off, I think, from, trying to just place it on the map, you know it better, but that is the document we were able to find. We weren't able to find any other information as to the, as to the rationale. I can only think that, given the condition of it in 2000, maybe they were concerned about through traffic. I don't know.
I think kids were going in there and hanging up.
Okay, fair.
Where I live, I was, I was.
Okay.
You know, making a mess and stuff like that, I think was in the-
Gentleman in the back raised his hand.
My name is Roland Tyler, live at 15 Leslie Terrace. When they put that up there, there was accidents on that road all the time. What's K and Z address?
Oh, it was, it's 12.
And in front of 12, Ellsworth.
Accidents?
Oh, no, not, not Ellsworth. It was, it was at the corner of, it was an accident at the corner of, my name's Deborah Tyler, by the way. It was the corner of Leslie Road and Ellsworth. There was, there was always vehicles going through, construction vehicles, and there's not enough, it's narrow. And there was, our babysitter got in the head on collision with one of the trucks. And the next door neighbors and I called the town and asked them if they could make it a one-way, and they decided it was safer to close it. And that was, they closed Meeting House. Meeting House goes from Leslie Road to 56, it's called 56 Ellsworth.
Right, right.
Yeah. So I'm confused about the lots being called Ellsworth.
Well, 23 would appear to be on Ellsworth.
No, Ellsworth-
Well, it's on, it's as you pointed out, it's on the-
But that's, the chain was just put there because the town decided to put it there, not because, that was, it's still, that's Meeting House.
Right, I agree.
It's called, it's called both, and the numbers go both down and up, apparently, and there's different lotting numbers over the years for this. We state that it's essentially, it's considered 20, 23 Ellsworth, and then 33 is considered Meeting House slash Ellsworth. It's confusing, they're, they're both show on the same roadway. I think that's, I think we know the roadway we're talking about. It goes from-
In actuality, it is Meeting House Lane, it is not Ellsworth Road. Ellsworth Road ends prior to your, ends prior to your site 33. It is where, where Ellsworth, Ellsworth comes. Ellsworth started way over on Leslie Road, where Ashley, Ashley Lane comes in. It came down behind all those houses on Wilson Pond, crossed Wilson Pond, and went down and next Meeting House Lane. And Meeting House Lane was dispossessed by the town years ago.
And I'm certainly not trying to quarrel on the name of it. I think we know the stretch of road we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of points. When Mr. Heidger was speaking earlier, I think he referenced the possibility of future development of the road, which might make the road more accessible. My advice would be not to consider the possibility of future improvements to the road, because the question before you on that third prong is, if it's a way that was in existence even crudely on the ground in 1952, does it now have sufficient construction grades, et cetera, to be safe, appropriate access for vehicles, including crucially, fire trucks? If somebody wanted in the, if it isn't now, and somebody in the future wanted to improve it and had the right to improve it, they could do so. And it would be appropriate for them at that time to come before you and make another request. But the question before you now is, is it currently appropriately accessible? Second related issue is, there is no requirement that a way be a throughway from one public way to another in order to satisfy this requirement. However, again, you do have to satisfy the fire department, and fire departments like to see not just a, you know, a relatively firm, wide road, but a place they can turn around. They don't need to turn around if it's a throughway. If it's not a throughway, they need some way to turn around a fire truck. And just finally, Mr. Taylorman is of course correct, that there is a, a house already there, I think opposite the side of the developers' two lots. That's certainly evidence, you may take it into account. It is not legally binding on you. There is ample legal authority to the effect that if a town makes a mistake one time, it's not bound to make the same mistake over and over again in the future.
Tom, may I, I, I know you've been involved with this case for a lot longer than at least I have. The land court case concludes saying, plaintiffs do not allege and have produced no evidence that the disputed way falls within either of the two remaining categories. Those are the two, the plaintiff talks about, the applicant talks about. And the court finds that it does not. Wouldn't we look pretty silly if on appeal, the court upholds its entire decision and we had made the decision otherwise? If the court didn't say, the court finds that it does not, and just left it open, saying, well, you know, you didn't produce evidence, but you're allowed to later or something, that's one thing. But it says, the court finds that it does not. On appeal, the court might say, we're going to uphold the entire decision on all three grounds, and you don't get it. And in the meantime, the applicant is proceeding on a parallel course here, both at the court and here. And that's my concern, and I, I know you've been involved with the case, so I'm, I could well, I could well be misled or misunderstanding, so on.
So I read the land court as saying that in that particular case, the plaintiff did not present evidence on the two final prongs, subdivision way or way in existence when subdivision control came into effect, and now having adequate grades in construction. That leaves it open to subsequent developers, including the applicant here, to argue, whoa, I've got evidence that the plaintiff in that case didn't present, and you need to keep an open mind about it. So I always urge adjudicatory boards such as yourselves to keep an open mind, never say never, don't say I won't consider, and hear the applicant out. My advice is that with respect to the subdivision issue, I have not seen any subdivision plans, and I don't hear Mr. Taylorman saying otherwise. I think the focus here is where Mr. Taylorman is trying to focus it, on that third prong. Was it a way in existence at the time in 1952? If so, are you satisfied with its construction grades, et cetera, now? And when I say you, again, I'm thinking more about the fire department.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I live at 38 Ellsworth Road, right across from the lot that was cleared that they're talking about, the near 15, over 15 years now. That road is not adequate for one car to get through. I can't understand how something could be built there and then you're going to change the, is it going to be one-way, is it gonna? Because right now, I have so many things. Right now, the post office, my first move there, they wouldn't let me put my mailbox in front of my house because they won't come down that end, because there's no place to turn around, and the road is not wide enough. When I first moved, my mailbox was out on Leslie Road, and the road was still open before the chain, the posts are up, but it was open. As soon as I moved there in 2003, it got closed. So it's always been me down there, and I went to another meeting probably 10 years ago, when all these little lot owners wanted to build houses there. And they all got turned down because the town said, the road is not adequate, highway department's there, fire department, all that. And they said, the town would need to put $850,000 into that road to make it safe to widen it, so that everybody got shut down. He comes along and buys these two lots for nothing, because they're not buildable, because none of those people could build. So if this goes in, then two years ago, when Wilson Pond Realty Trust, who's been in court with the town for almost 20 years, they wanted to put in- they wanted to put in an eight lot subdivision, change the road, put a cul-de-sac next to my house. And so if this goes in, then the other one's going to go in, and then all the other ones that own are going to go in, and then those other eight houses are going to go in. And, and the road is not adequate for any of that. So unless someone's going to develop the road and widen it, and I don't think it's wide enough to have the 24-foot road and a four-foot sidewalk is what they needed two years ago. So I, I don't understand how any of this can even happen. So in the wintertime, that's why I own a Jeep, I just bought another Jeep, because you can't get out of there, because the town plows that last. We as neighbors all got together and hired a lawyer, because the road was, the town decided to start plowing and maintaining the road. So at least the town now plows it, but they don't maintain it. So we chip up, chip in and get, you know, gravel and fix it. You say you walk it all the time, you see how it is. So it is not, it is not adequate to build any more houses on that end.
You use, you use, you use Meeting House Lane, Ellsworth Road, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, just me.
As your driveway.
Um, well, I have a driveway, and that's, yeah, it's, there's no one, you know, no one drives down there, because you can't turn around, and there's nothing else down there. When I first was buying my house, I was told it was 38 Meeting House Lane. And then when I went, you know, to get paid this far and all that, they said, no, it's Ellsworth Road. So there was a little confusion even then. And I know that when they built my house, the town said, go ahead with the permit, and then mid-poor of the foundation, they stopped it because they made a mistake. So my, my foundation line, you can see where the cement stopped, and then they got approval and they finished building it. But the town always maintained that, we made one mistake, we're not going to make more by letting more houses down there. It's just not adequate. Because I don't understand, if there's more houses down there, and I'm going out and a car's coming in, what, what happens? What, what, what happens? Where, where do you go? There's all woods on the side.
Despite your, your vehicle choice, which I think is a smart one, is there, uh, do you access it off of Wilson Pond then? Do you come Wilson Pond to Ellsworth?
Just Wilson Pond, yeah. Now, recently, in the last week or so, someone in a pickup truck has decided to go up and over the woods, around the post.
Around the post.
There's one person, I see him, I see him every night, so he takes the shortcut.
Yeah.
And, and he comes around.
Yeah.
And that's what used to happen all the time, and it was crazy out there.
Yeah.
And one, one of our neighbors at, um, at 56, who had built the house there, he moved boulders there to block the rest of it. And now with land being moved and trees being cut down, there's another access there, so people are coming around. So, I, I just, I, I don't see it. I mean, I just don't see how it could possibly happen without massive improvement. And I don't know what the laws are, but no one's taking any of my land to make the road wider. So that, I don't know which way they're going to go.
Thanks, Billy.
Thank you.
Do you all own out to the center of that roadway or?
You know, I got another question, though. So if it's not a public road, and it's a private road, so do we own the road?
Exactly, yes.
So he's asking you.
Do you own half of the middle of it?
Private way, so I assume you must own to the center.
I mean, we, we didn't know it was a private, I didn't ever knew it was a private way when I bought there, because the town took care of everything. They trimmed the trees, they filled the holes, they rated it all the time.
What, what does your plot plan say?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, my plot plan.
I, I would have to look again, I do have it, but I would have to look.
Yeah, you better figure out where you own and where you don't.
We, we suspect everyone owns to the center line.
I would guess.
Yeah. I mean, we, we've had a survey planned on, the, the right-of-way is close to 40 feet wide. The, the roadway is obviously a lot less than that in its current state. Any property along the way has the right to improve it for, for the length of it. But, I mean, it's not where we are right now, it might be where it happens. And I agree with, with Tom, that you're aware is as is. When I'm, when I suggest that we're willing to, um, have a good faith discussion with the town and with your board about going easy on this, and just, we just want the one lot, that's the kind of discussion that, that we've been working on. And there is one lot there. I appreciate, we appreciate that the access is minimal. We think it would be preferable if there are those concerns that one lot be developed rather than a whole bunch of lots. But it is, it is what it is. There's a lot of, there's other property owners up there too, that I think probably have an interest in improving the way too. We can't, we can't prevent that. Everyone who owns the, the way could improve it the whole length.
You, sir.
Hi. My name is Richard Sheen, I live at 66 Wilson Pond Lane. My driveway access is on Ellsworth Road, and I just had a question for town council. There's been mention of improving the roadway. Under its current status, who's responsible for that? And what protections are there for, say, a developer coming through and wanting to improve the roadway for the sake of their development at the, uh, maybe at the disagreement of the abutters of that land?
The, the law in Massachusetts, as I understand it, is that if you live on, live on, if you own property that abuts a private way, you have the right to develop the entirety of that way. The only limitation there is that you may not develop it in such a way as to disadvantage any other owner. So for example.
So that would involve drainage and things like that?
Yes. So, so for example, you can't, you can grade and pave the entire way if you like, but you may not pave it in such a way that another abutter is now way below the level of the street and can't access it.
Right, right.
We could terminate it, we couldn't do it up to a certain point and try and terminate someone's access.
You know, I, um, I would offer to, to the audience that in, in, in this board's work in, um, in looking at smaller affordable housing developments in the town, among the more significant elements of a project is the road access, and the grading, and the, and the impact on the surrounding properties and land and the work that needs to be done. And it is frankly extremely substantial. And it's, it's a lot more difficult to see and think that through in an environment of a conversation without good, hard engineering data that answers a lot of these questions that are, I think, very valid questions, number one. It also seems obvious to me that without a really good statement from the fire department about their opinion about the condition of the road now, and the kind of things they would want to see done, so that we could say to the applicant, well, here's what the fire department thinks, and then the board begins to consider whether or not any of those things are even conceivable, would preclude the board from being able to say, sure, go ahead, fix it at some point, because, um, Tom Mullen's point about the condition of the road now is what my concern is, is that it's right now. And I, and I, it sounds the foregone conclusion that issues one and two are not really on the table. They're not, there aren't any way for you to, to demonstrate that either one of those could be factually true.
Well, condition one, we do present additional evidence. We know that it's a, a big hill to climb. We, we do think that the, as we say in our memo, that the land court was specifically said based on just the evidence before them. We're, we're providing some additional evidence to support the, the public way. That said, you've got good town council, I've known for a, a long time, who's giving you an opinion that it's not a public way. I, I don't, I don't expect you to believe me and, and not him. So I am pressing on the issue regarding access, because that's more factually dependent. We are comfortable with the board, or whoever, or us reaching out to the fire department. We're comfortable with this board, as many of you are familiar with the roadway already, taking a view, and we could arrange it in, in such a way so you see what it's like out there. We're, we're happy to continue working on this. It doesn't have to be resolved tonight, we can continue to your next hearing, and we could redouble our due diligence on the issue of adequacy of access as it may apply to the, um, to the fire department. So, and we're happy to keep working on it. We're, we're not trying to say we're going to cheap out on access, and we're not, also not trying to say that tomorrow we want to run a 40-foot roadway through there either. We're not, we're looking for two house lots, and we could probably live with one up there. It's, we're, we're, we don't have grandiose plans, and we do want to satisfy the criteria.
Yeah, I feel, I mean, it seems to me that, that, you know, the only way we can go is to think about continuing, pending further information, whether or not we have a site visit with the group of us with the fire department, and have Chief Roderick, you know, you know, meet us over there, and then he'll prepare, and we frequently submit, um, our applications to all departments requesting feedback. So he may in fact have seen this and simply not responded to it yet.
And, and we can redouble our efforts to try and reach out to him as well, and arrange and provide him with schematics, and use auto-turn analysis to show how he might be able to access our driveway safely with his larger apparatus. Those are things that we can do to satisfy him in this board.
In, in my experience, he'll be looking for those.
Okay.
What about the police department and the, and the highway department being there? All, all of them, you know, two, two, one car can barely get by. How are two ever going to get by without moving the road?
Are we getting away from?
I was, I was.
We're doing appeal from the building.
I went down there the other day, and I don't have a big car. I have a hard-looking CRV. And I had to turn around in your driveway.
Yep. And when the.
There's no room down there to turn around.
You basically hit the trees that are growing through, and in the winter, I don't know if you people watch sports, it's like a luge, because they put one plow down the middle, you couldn't be in the middle of the road and open your doors. So I don't understand trying to get this one house in, one house in. One house is going to let in all kinds of houses without the road being improved, which is what the town said 10 years ago, that the road needs to be improved, and we can't afford it. So none of you people with your little lots can build.
Yeah, I, I, I would be very surprised if, if we ever saw a road there very easily, number one. There's an enormous amount of data that needs to be put on the table. So I, I would, I would, if I were you, as an owner on that street, I, I would just sit back and watch for a while. Nothing's going to happen for all, for quickly, for all of the dynamics, even with the good faith effort to, to meet every conceivable issue that comes up. There may be other issues that, that none of us even are aware about that would, would be surfaced when we got to there.
So all of those things would have to be met before a house went in?
I, I would, I would think that there would be a lot of parties that want, would want confidence that a road that was properly designed and placed and built to all kinds of highway specs, that the building department, building inspector would also sign off on, that the CONCON would also sign off on, that the highway department, that the police department, traffic study, all those kinds of things get involved, in, in terms of input.
Before you people overturn it and give a building.
I would, I would.
Way, way, way before that.
Way before that.
Way before that. We wouldn't do that contingentially, although Dave, you make an excellent point. Would you make it again?
Well, we're supposed to be doing the appeal of the building inspector's decision. And we're getting into everything else. Plus, like Bob said, I mean, they've got to go to court for us. I mean, what are they going to do there to do the appeal before we're talking about roads and all this? I think we're getting way ahead of what we, you know, we're wasting a lot of time here, I think.
Well, Tom, that's a valid question, is, is we are here just looking at an application to appeal a building inspector's position, which is based on that court case.
Not really based entirely on that court case. The, the question for the building inspector in the fir, was in the first instance the same as the question that is now before you. It has three parts. The building inspector certainly took the position, and I would say rightly, that this is not a public way. His decision necessarily meant, however, that he also concluded this is not a subdivision way. And again, I think he was right. And then there's the third question, and there, I don't want to opine, because that's a fact-driven question for you, not for me.
This is something that, that I think nobody has even thought of. Any change in those lot dimensions along Ellsworth Road, widthwise, frontage, any change in the lot lines, they lose their grandfathered status. So if you widen the road, you're going to have to, if you, if you widen the road, you're going to have to take land from those properties, and you're going to lose your grandfather.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually, in some circumstances, that might be the case. In this circumstance, we've had the, had it surveyed. And the, the roadway, and I'll just show you, this is my only copy, we're happy to get you copies of it. The dotted line here is the approximate location of the existing gravel surface roadway. The larger, approximately 30, 35 to 40-foot wide area is the, the width on paper. So the ability to improve would, can happen without affecting the existing grandfathered lot lines. That's according to our surveyor. So we wouldn't run into that issue. I agree with you that on some ancient ways, that may be the case here, based upon the recorded plans of record, the width is enough for us to widen the roadway without actually affecting the existing grandfathered lot line. But that, that's a future thing, right? Yeah.
I just ask one question, so a grandfathered lot, it doesn't matter that it's not owned by the same people or relatives? Someone can come along and they get the same grandfathered rules?
Yeah.
Is that how that goes?
Yeah, a grandfathered lot is.
So there, there's no minimum requirement for a lot if it's grandfathered? Isn't there a certain?
If it's before a zoning bylaw, yeah.
Isn't there, there's a certain lot size that you can build on in Raleigh?
Yeah, but if a lot existed before that, that existed, it's grandfathered, as you said.
Well, but there are still minimums.
There's 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet.
Even if it's grandfathered, there are certain minimums, has to have 50 feet frontage.
Which these lots have, yeah.
And 5,000 square feet of area.
Right, and 5,000 square.
All right.
So we'd be pleased for continuance, and we can redouble our, our efforts, and see, especially with the, obviously with respect to the third prong, if we can provide some additional information for you, we're, we're happy to agree to that.
At least, did we reach out to fire department? Nothing?
No.
Okay.
We'll, we'll contact them, I mean, you feel free to contact them too, obviously, but we'll, we'll reach out to them.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know if they'll talk to us, or if they'll take your, from you.
I think, we should communicate. I think we should request that they, that they, what we want in their view and what information we need in, in a hard copy letter, as opposed to a verbal. And the chief is usually pretty good about providing detailed information about their assessment of needs and conditions. But we'll start there.
Perfect.
Okay.
Should we continue this?
Applicants requesting.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just say, I will defer to town council's opinion. Personally, I would say, let the land court make its decision and clear it all up. Because the land court made a decision on all three grounds, it denied it on all three grounds. If they have evidence they didn't have, and they're willing to take more evidence on appeal, which they may not, that's fine. However, I don't want to be, I don't want to be a stickler on that and, and just hold out for it. So I'll say, um, I'll, I'll go ahead with the continuance.
We can still, however, reach that conclusion. Town council's advised us to, to assemble data, and in my mind, that's what we're doing, we're assembling.
Well, then you, then you might be making a decision that says, we decide as the follows, we decide as follows depending upon what the land court does, you think?
Right, in other words, instead of doing it tonight.
Oh, no, no, I, well.
Because I, it seems to me that there are, that there is potentially information out there that, you may have researched it, Mr. Taylorman, but, and then it sounds like.
No doubt he does have that. But that's for the court to decide if they're going to allow him to use it in the appeal, because he didn't have it in the first trial.
I, I.
I don't think. I want to say too, we are not involved. My client is not involved in that case, so that's other part, that's another party, it's not binding on us. On questions of law, no, no, it's a different property. Those are different parcels.
Okay. Good point, good, good point.
Yes, but it's the same criteria.
Yeah, and the same road.
It would be the same criteria across the town too, it's the same road. But what I'm suggesting, at least with respect to one of the lots, it's the other end of the road. It's beyond the chain, whereas we think factually, they only considered it in one direction. And in fact, they didn't really present much evidence on it at all. And in fact, they didn't really present much evidence on it at all. And we are here to present fresh evidence and we'll continue to provide evidence at, at your next session in an effort to satisfy you. And if you, and if you're not satisfied, then so be it. At least you'll have a full record. We would submit a fuller record than was presented in the, in the prior instance.
Well, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. So, you know, I, I would move that we continue to our January hearing. In the meantime, we contact the fire department and request the chief to review the application and, and perhaps to discuss setting up a visit so we can go with him and take a look at it and then have a fair... I don't know if he can do that all by the next month candidly.
Right.
Nor do we. And if, and if we think that there's still evidence out there that needs to be gained, we're happy to, to not, yeah.
Continue.
Right, we don't, it's the winter right now.
Right, yeah, right. No one's born in a foundation, so. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I made a motion?
I made, so made.
Can I ask that you, you name a particular date and time that you're continuing it to?
What's the January date, please?
Seventeen?
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
January seventeen.
At, at what time?
Seven oh five.
Actually, maybe January sixteen at seven P.M.
Yeah, right.
Oh, could be. Okay, okay. We might change our, we might change our meeting from Thursday to Wednesday.
Okay.
Which will tell you about a couple hours.
So you gotta, you gotta, unfortunately, you have to pick one.
You do, yeah.
Sixteen.
Okay.
Perfect.
At seven oh five?
Ken, go.
I guess so.
Well, we can put that date for sure. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, bye.
All right.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Hey, nice to meet you. So council, you were saying, anything but our, or what that can improve the entire road, as long as it does not infringe upon other people's...
Right, right. I forget how, what's it say, the interests of someone other. I'm actually not sure if you have a dead-end road and you live in the middle of it. I know you can improve from the intersecting street to your house.
I don't know that you can do all the way through. I know to provide essential access, yeah.
Because our, you know, my driveway is the first access on the road. So I can basically say I can improve that.
No, you can do more technically, but it's to provide...
Oh, right, so it, it depends a little bit, but if access is dependent upon the fire department, they don't want things to be... But that's a, that's a title question. You know, we're not there at this point.
And way down like sports person. You know, come on to Wilt's.
That's up there.
Get down.
Thirty.
You're thirty-three.
From Leslie.
The post office, this story, this town, like, that...
The walls there, Westland.
It's a project.
We heard what we have in the...
Let him go to court and prove that...
Well, it's good to meet you. Thank you for your...
That's one of my questions.
To part with the locals of the city, that's true.
He wanted to say nothing. Plus, he brings up, he brings up Warren Street, Lawrence Street. You know, that's...
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
How many clean the room?
No, I know, I know.
But I don't...
All right.
We can have a...
They go a lot in here.
An American barbecue.
Lisa, I met with Ken Ward earlier this week to inform him that we are looking to reduce the scope for, for the proposed American barbecue renovation located in the above reference address. The ZBA granted the owner of American barbecue relief on setback. The decision was signed and dated April four, two thousand eighteen. Due to the cost of the proposed project, the owner has to find ways to reduce the project cost. The proposed changes have fairly minimal impact on exterior proposed addition and renovation, but reduced the size of the original proposal. I've discussed the changes with Ken Ward and left him a revised site plan showing the proposed changes. Mr. Ward agreed that changes were minded and reduced the size of the project and said that he would discuss it with the board members, if needed, to see if the changes would require us to go back to the ZBA to request a change. I received a voice mail message on Wednesday, December twelve, from Mr. Ward explaining that he spoke with you regarding the changes and that you had reached out to some of the board members and everyone agreed the change did not require a submission due to the fact that the revisions reduced the size of the original proposal. Mr. Ward asked to follow up with you in a letter explaining our intentions. Thank you for your time and let me know with any additional questions or concerns. Lisa called me regarding this and I told her, I said, there's no need for, for the board to reopen the case or anything else, just that we needed to see the approval, the new plans.
Right.
Of which we have right now first to look at and we approved the plans.
Yeah, he just cut down there and there, he's cutting it down, making it less than what it was.
Yeah, that works for me. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I know, he just told me he doesn't have the money.
So...
Just reducing the revision.
Am I saying this thing?
Yeah, see, you're reducing it. That's what it was in your, as you said, yeah. It was seven, seven thirty-five eight, right? And then he's reducing it down to, what the hell was it, what was that number?
Well, he, he's got two, he's got two, he's got new seven thirty-five, which seems to align with this, and he's got new three eighty-eight, which aligns with this, but that doesn't, either seem smaller. So what's he doing?
Underneath. Well, that's the new plan, new plan, you gotta look at the old one.
That's the new one. Now you look at the other one underneath and that's what the change is.
Oh, oh, that's the top one. Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So he took a hundred square feet off here, mostly down in here somewhere, it looks like. Oh, he changed this.
It's cold in here, Lisa, isn't it?
Yeah, he's changed this.
Is that why I'm shivering?
Oh, you know why? Because it doozles. It's not, it's not the whole building.
This thing building, he's not, he's not changing it.
Yeah, it's on. Yeah, there you go. You guys see that? Oh, right, right.
He's only rebuilding three hundred eighty-eight feet of it instead of eight hundred seventy. We're just leaving this portion, we're leaving this here. Here, right? He's not doing all this over in there. Right. Which, which included coming, you know, roughly from here down into there, so smaller here too.
He made, he made this here small.
Yes. And he's cut this down too.
I was, I was wondering about him sweating back on.
That's more than, no, I think, he's cut this one, this one is down here, so he's cut that.
Right, he's cut this back here.
And with, what's going on now with the building?
Yeah, no, I'd say it's now, because this line...
He's coming from the end.
See, this line here, the, the new line runs off the front of the building here and here, this extended out. So what he's done is he brought it, he's dropped this out here, he's taken that off there and he's taken this off in here. So all he's really doing is this section, he's moved it out to here.
Right.
And he's going down to this, so it's about a half. He dropped there. This one, he didn't drop as much, he dropped not quite. Old nine, ten, seven thirty-five, two hundred square feet, a nine hundred, eighteen percent or so, so not significant. But it's smaller, so.
Yeah.
If anything, he's coming out, three four, three three four, that's the same, he's got a ramp.
And they had a couple, took out a couple, and you can't... All right, he's leaving his ramp. Whatever it is, a special way of putting it.
This is the new one.
Right, that's the new one.
That's the old one.
Yeah, so that's the one. He doesn't seem to have it in there.
That's it, yeah.
No, this is just a roof area, is what he's got there.
Right, yeah. That's for you.
Well, let's, just relabel this.
As the distance is in, can you tell?
There's no difference.
Yes, exactly. But he took it off here. He had, he had to take that, that distance and cut this back here some. It's my, that's my first thought.
All right. You see that? Because, because, you know, we say in our decisions, you know, any change...
You gotta tell us.
Gotta tell us.
Right, that's fine, that's cool.
That's what he's doing.
That's what he's doing, he's doing right there.
Okay. Okay. Try it up there now, I'm a little scared. Is this a ghost or is this really Mr. Deculus? We're, we're running, we're running late.
Did we vote?
We're running right now.
We got, we got a vote, are approving that.
So I hear a motion to approve the plans, the new plans for...
As modified?
Modified, modified plans for...
Our American?
American barbecue.
Some move.
There we go.
Okay, all in favor?
Mine.
All right, Mr. Deculus, you've got ten minutes.
Can you wrap it up? Can you wrap it up, so we can go?
What do you got for us?
I was wondering if you had an opportunity to review the chief, fire, fire chief Broderick's letter? And do you agree that he approves what, what we submitted?
He seems to be saying that.
What?
He seems to be saying that. Right.
and, and you know, and he knows, in terms of the distance, he, he makes a comment. He says, as I say in my letter, request that any long driveway, you know, what is a long driveway? Do we know what a long driveway is? What is that? Is it over twen... What does he mean by that? Do you...
Long feet?
Well, he says long driveway. He says any long driveway. How does John know if he has a long driveway there? What is a long driveway?
Well, it does, lot six does have a long driveway and we've increased the width to fourteen feet.
Yep.
And he, I believe he accepted that.
And the width was what? Do you recall? I don't recall. I'd have to look up my, yeah, by the way.
What was the original, eight feet?
Eight, right.
Yeah.
Oh, so you've almost doubled it.
Yeah, so it's not fourteen now.
Yep.
Right.
John, how big is your road going in here? How big is the actual road?
I'm sorry?
How big is the actual road going in there anyway?
The pavement?
Yes.
Twenty-six feet, same as the standard subdivision.
Twenty-six feet. So forty feet would be a more than adequate capability to put an adequate road. Or if you had forty, if you had forty. Because the last case was arguing that, you know, we could use up to forty feet back there in that, in this last particular case and, and, you know, to make a two-way road. And, and if you're saying twenty-six is all that's coded required, forty would be more than...
The planning board rules and regulations state twenty-six feet.
Okay.
Pavement.
Okay. Because you, yeah, because you went from twenty-two to twenty-six.
Right.
So why are they going for forty?
He, he said he has forty. I think that's their comfort level. I think it, it's, I, I think he's trying to demonstrate that...
Sidewalk?
What's that?
That's not what sidewalk is.
He's got forty feet to work with. You have twenty-six plus sidewalk. He's talking about pavement, right?
Pavement.
Pavement.
Twenty-six pavement, so forty could be...
Forty would be big enough to support fourteen feet on both sides, so he could, they could put seven feet for, on each side and throw a sidewalk there. But I, but, you know, I don't see how you could do that.
Not long, not long.
Yeah, he says he's concerned about it.
Yeah.
But then he says, you know, the department cannot force the turnaround in the driveways as the fire code changed.
So what's a long driveway?
You know, this is on the roadway. He's still concerned about the turnaround just in the roadway.
Right.
On the driveway. Lisa?
Yes.
Do we have this?
No.
Do we have this?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's workable. Workable, fire, yeah.
Some way.
That doesn't seem to be an issue.
All right. Before we get into anything about the fire department, at our last meeting or whatnot, I mentioned that at ten o'clock, eighteenth of October, this evening, member Crow requested from Mr. Deculus a status by an email on everything. On eleven-seventh, spoke from Mr. Deculus concerning the requested information above. He said he didn't have. And also mentioned the board members' requests were a status on current issues. Mentioned that email would be acceptable. Eleven-thirteen, we see a continuance email. On seven-nineteen, ZBA meeting, ZBA board members requested the following documents from Mr. Crow and/or Mr. Deculus to be available, delivered to the board members at the next ZBA meeting, eight sixteen eighteen. There are six items here. Comment to first refusal from Board of Selectors. We received that on nine-five eighteen. Updated PNS reflecting the proposed twelve single-family structures. Three, supply the department's border health, CONCON, fire department with their requested information, including a new updated app... with their requested information, including a new updated application, border health and CC. Waiver summary, board members' request, board rules request. Pro forma in the new application, we haven't received those yet.
Where's Mr. Crowe? Is he all done?
Sorry, Dean.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. Is Mr. Crowe, is he done?
No, no, Mr. Crowe is still active in the project.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
What you don't seem to understand is that we're over a year now. And you filed an application showing the same, the same roadway and number of houses as this, as what we denied, okay? And I told you at that night when we opened the hearing that if you were gonna come back with the exact same thing, that I was gonna vote no.
Right, I remember that, right?
You remember that, okay? So I made a suggestion that you come back with a plan for.
Twelve.
Six, six buildings with three units in each.
Right.
And, and giving us one affordable unit in each building, all right? Subsequently, Mr. Crowe.
Michael Crowe.
No, no, the other one.
Tom Franco's?
Franco's. He heard that and he backed out.
Right.
Okay, and you've got Mr. Crowe. And Mr. Crowe looked at the project and came back to us with a whole new project. So it was like starting all over again. And so we requested a new application, a new pro forma and so forth and whatnot. And because any change from the application, major change, required that. And you made a major change. All right? And you've come in with a, with a proposal now for twelve single-family homes.
Correct.
Which is far different than ten duplexes of twenty units. I'm not gonna say whether it was better or worse. I'm not gonna even comment on that. But what I'm saying is there was a, it's a change and it's a major change. So that these items that we requested are necessary for us to go further. And until we get that information, we're not gonna go any further.
All right.
Do you understand me now?
Yes. I have a question, John. Point, point of affirmation. I seem to have missed the fact that we have a plan now for twelve single-family homes.
Yes.
There are no more duplexes?
Correct.
How the hell did I just?
There's a couple affordable, two or three? Yeah, there's a couple affordable.
It was.
Really, twelve single?
Three affordable, right, yeah. Twelve single and three affordable.
Remember how the road comes in, there's.
I thought we.
Different size lots.
I thought when you, what was the original application?
Twenty.
Twenty units.
Twenty units.
Twenty units, it's twenty units.
Some of them were duplex, none of them all.
Ten, ten lots.
They weren't all duplex, were they?
Twenty units.
Ten lots, twenty units.
Yeah.
Now we.
Now we have twelve lots.
I don't remember that.
Twelve lots.
Twelve lots with a single-family home in each one.
Did I get a copy of that?
Yes, you did. You were here, I think.
Well, wait a minute. This is, this is dated, you asked, received it in eight. So nine, ten, we didn't have a meeting last month. So it was either the September meeting or the October meeting, all that stuff?
No, we didn't do that.
Right.
When we looked at the design for the twelve units, it's months ago. No, that was back in last February. February, we got the new plan.
Did you read that, John? Yeah, the new plans are, are kind of.
So.
And. I don't go by any of these.
No, no, no.
I'm looking at the dates myself. I'm confused on the dates. I don't remember all those things. But I remember seeing the twelve units.
Yeah.
I remember discussing that.
Well, I think you gave it to me, but I.
Yes, in February.
I realize you were.
John and.
Probably our campaign.
Because he's right. Yeah. He's, he's right. It's totally different.
And of the twelve, what are there, three that are affordable?
Three that are affordable. I remember that discussion very well.
Yeah.
Well, good.
Yeah, just shows you how, when it gets that complicated, the problem. Well, it's so long and everything changes, different people. So. Yeah, it would be, it would be good if you could get it all together and give us a comprehensive, you know, report on everything.
Compile it all.
And let us know what variances you need.
Well, we need, we need waivers for the, before we can deal with the border health. We need, we need waivers on the, on the border health issues. Otherwise, they won't review the plans because they won't.
We can do a piecemeal.
They, they, they won't meet their local regulations.
Well, how are we gonna do a piecemeal? We have to vote on the waivers as a plan. I mean, if we, if we approve certain waivers and then you get them from the border health and then there's other waivers that apply to something else and those go wrong, then you gotta go back to the border health.
We can't, we cannot, we cannot waive any border health regulations.
Well, no, that's, that's true. Yeah, that's, I forgot that. You're right.
So, so what, what are you, what are you saying? The border health wants, wants to know. They, they won't, they won't do anything until they see a final plan? Well, no, they, we've given them a final plan, but I'll double check with them. But I believe the feeling I have now is that they will not review our plans unless waivers are given from their local regulations. I'll double check that, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's their feeling.
Lisa?
Mr. Chairman, the border health, they want a new application. They want that paperwork.
They want, they want the same thing where that has.
They want the same thing that the ZBA board members want.
All right.
Yes, this was.
All right.
Waiver summary, board.
That's what it is. They want a new set of plans.
Absolutely.
New application.
They wanna see all that.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that puts that.
And that was, and that was discussed four or five months ago too. Just wanted to put that in there.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, maybe as a board, you should author a letter following this meeting outlining to the applicant exactly what we're telling them we need. Don't rely on the minutes, because that requires them to come read the minutes. Send them a letter and saying if we don't get this, it's gonna be denied at the next meeting. Okay? Or the meeting after. I mean, I don't want to be.
Crowe, address it to Mr. Crowe.
Both. Send it to both.
Well, the applicants, applicant applicants.
Applicants.
Or his agents.
The John and.
You can copy everybody, sure.
Doesn't hurt.
Just so there's no question. Nobody can say they didn't understand.
All right, Mary Preston.
Fair enough.
We're not gonna go four years like we did last time. Right, right. And we don't want to, we don't. Okay. Lisa, you'll draft the letter?
I will.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk with Dawn.
Yeah, I'll talk to Dawn about the particulars and deadlines.
Do I, 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 you know, I think, let's think about the deadline. I don't think there's any way in God's green earth that you're gonna produce something in thirty days.
No, not thirty days.
So what, the first deadline's sixty days? Is that fine?
Yeah. Sixty days?
Sixty days.
Okay.
You know.
What's on, we will.
February.
Yeah.
Or there will be dire consequences.
February twenty-second.
Take us all out to dinner.
Wednesday, February twenty-second? What day is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
February twenty-second.
You're pulling a fast one on me, actually.
Time to time.
Your hearing, your hearing's probably deadline.
Can we get this rolled up?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
She already.
For the next year. Wednesdays.
All right. Is it the third Wednesday?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Why? Oh, we should finish this first.
Yes.
Huh?
We should finish this first.
Right. Okay, I've got nothing, nothing more, all right?
Continue.
So continue this to, to February twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay.
February twenty-second.
We continue with the Deculus Marion Way hearing to February sixteen, did we say?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. February twenty-second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's second? Second.
This is our.
Motion to adjourn?
We'll get to adjourn.
Are we talking about the?
Second.
Yes, but we can do that all.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
You can shut the camera and start with it.